Yes.
Well, no, no. He was saying move down there.
Oh, would you like to move down there?
No, I'll go sit down there, that's fine.
Mayor, Commissioners, and Members of the Board, I just want to thank you all for taking the time to be with us this afternoon. I think there's three things that I've wanted to cover. The first would probably not take very long, so for those of you who haven't met me before, I'm Eduardo Guzmán, I'm the Organizational Development Specialist with New Mexico Main Street. And we have on the meeting on Zoom here, we have Daniel Luquez, and he is the State Director for New Mexico Main Street. So I think there were three topics that I just wanted to cover today a little bit. The biannual MOU, so I have that in front of me. I have ten copies, I will share that, hand that out. And then the second part is, Daniel wants to talk a little bit about the Great Blocks Project and the infrastructure funding for this year. Probably those would maybe take about ten or ten minutes apiece, unless you have questions for Daniel or I on either the MOU or the Great Blocks. And then the third one is what I really wanted to get some feedback on is the annual contract with Tucumcari Main Street. And so, basically, I'm usually the one that writes these contracts on behalf of the Main Street Program. I'm in the process, the board asked me to kind of update it this year, and I really would like to get some feedback from the city leaders and the Commission on toward the next steps with the contract. Daniel, is there anything you want to say before we jump into the MOU?
Sure. Well, just thanks for taking the time to meet with us and apologize for not being there. Busy week, just got back from a conference in Richmond, Virginia that Connie was at as well, and I do want to say that you guys would have been very proud of her. She did a great job presenting on the microloan program and the Forge Project to a large crowd at the Main Street Conference, so she did a great job. We really appreciate all the work that she's doing and sharing that information with the broader network.
No embarrassment.
So with that, yeah, I'll just turn it back over to you.
Did you get your luggage when you came home?
I got it, but it was in pieces, my luggage was broken.
Oh, no, I still have it, I still have it resting in mine, Daniel.
Oh, that's too bad. Mine looked like it got dragged down the runway, but at least I got it.
It was hanging out the door against the airplane.
Hopefully yours is intact. Hopefully the weight isn't.
Excellent. Well, Daniel, feel free to jump in if there's anything we need to add on the MOU, but I just wanted to say, so the MOU that I handed out, this document goes out from New Mexico Main Street every two years, so it's basically the philosophical agreement between the local government and the local Main Street Program and the state, the state Main Street Program. So it's a, it's quite, it's a twenty-something page document, about fifteen of those are in, and the attachment, the second piece, so basically the MOU is every two years, and it basically spells out the requirements of the Main Street Program, Tucumcari Main Street, the expectations of the city, and then the expectations of New Mexico Main Street as well. And I think, so pages two, two, six, two to five, is basically the main elements of that. So it basically says, here's what Tucumcari Main Street needs to do to not only to be accredited program, which basically opens up the eligibility for capital funding for New Mexico Main Street. Here's the expectations of them to not only be accredited, but on their day-to-day work around focusing their projects around some two or three key economic transformation strategies for the district, right? And so we help the Main Street Program come up with those, we help them refine those every year. The strategy should not change for anywhere from five to eight years, but the projects should change each year, right? And so you'll see some things get updated in the annual contracts in that process as well. The MOU basically binds the three partners, the state, the city of Tucumcari, and Tucumcari Main Street, to work together on the revitalization of the downtown. So it's a, it's, there's some minimal requirements of everybody, particularly around the funding piece, and then I'll talk a little bit how that pays out in the contract. Most of the communities around the state have the MOU, they sign two years, and then the contract is every year because it's dependent on the appropriations from the City Commission as well, right? And so you haven't seen this this year, is there are not any big changes to the MOU over the previous two years. It's essentially the same contract with some minor edits, but basically, this would get presented at a City Commission meeting, and will also require a Commission Resolution that says, when we signed this, the Commission passed the resolution. I have sent the draft language for that resolution, it's the same one that you had when you signed this two years ago, to Connie, and she can forward that to the Commission as well. Daniel, is there anything else you want to add around the MOU before I ask her questions around that one?
No, I think you covered it. It's mainly that it's not any different than the last one, like Eduardo said, minor changes, and they're really, the changes were more to the backend of the appendix, just in terms of how communities become a Main Street Program, but you guys are already one, so it doesn't really relate to you. But, yeah, it's no different, you know, it is the same one we've been doing for a while. But, yeah, it's just looking forward to working with you guys as we move forward, but, yeah, we can answer any questions you guys might have.
Anybody have any questions? So Daniel has pre-signed this, and so that we have an electronic copy that we can forward, but I wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to go through that quickly today and see if anybody had any questions about the MOU.
The minor corrections or changes, is that in the MOU, or is that mostly in the attachment one?
It's mostly in the attachment, is that right, Daniel?
Yes, that's correct. It's mostly in the attachment. MOU content's exactly the same, other than fixing some typos and updating the dates, so nothing's changed in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions around the MOU concerns? So I, so my assumption is that at some point this will get on the Commission's agenda for review and approval, and this document will go with it, and will also attach the Commission Resolution for approval. Generally speaking, so it's effective July 1st, and most of the Main Street communities process these sometime between June and the end of August, right? And so if it doesn't get on your Commission agenda right away, then there's some opportunity to work, Daniel will work through that. Once the signatures are here locally, then they move it through and they execute the document at the Economic Development Department, and then you will have a copy, a completely signed copy for your records as well. No questions, no comments?
No. You know, I didn't have time to read it, I just got it now, so I don't have any questions. I couldn't have.
There is a, so once the Commission, one thing that I would say is that there's a table in the appendix that talks about the requirements of the Main Street Program for accreditation, the minimum budgets they need to have for their operations, the local government partner commitments, et cetera, and that's basically the minimum amount just for them to do the Main Street Program. So then, when you see the contract, which I have here as well from last year, I'll show you how that splits up between the core services and the additional services. I think the most important part that we, that why the MOU is important is because we feel like a good, strong partnership between the city and the Main Street Program are really what's needed to make some big impacts in the community. And so when we look around the thirty other Main Street communities, the ones where we see a lot of progress and forward movement is where the city and the Main Street Program are really working together on their planning work, their project delineation, and how they move that project forward. So I think any time that the city has questions or wants to prioritize some of their economic development work, that's where you and the Main Street organization should really have a tight partnership and sort out what needs to happen. Ideally, the contracts, the discussions about some of your priorities that go into the contracts for the coming year are usually hammered out somewhere between January and April or so, right? And so that if you have some big projects in the works, you have a chance to kind of work on those pieces as well. We do have some communities that we have been working on these late into the year, after the fiscal year starts in September, October, even November, once, and a couple of them, right? So don't feel like you're behind the curve, but I think once the city really has a sense of, here's what we want to do next in our downtown revitalization work, then those conversations should start already, and we're available to help facilitate any of those differences we are.
What do you mean, what the city feels we need to work on?
So ideally, Commissioner Moia, so if there are areas in your economic development goals for your downtown district, your downtown Main Street district, right? That's where you would want to approach the Main Street Program and say, hey, how do we work on whether it's infrastructure, or it's business retention, or business development, how do we work on maybe things like ordinances, you know, business incentives? How do we start working on those pieces together? So they're priority that is of the city, that would be related to the Main Street Program and vice versa as well. If you have a downtown master plan or a downtown MRA plan, your contract should kind of reflect the priorities that are in there as well, right? So it shouldn't be a one-direction communication, Tucumcari Main Street coming to you and saying, this is what we want to do. It should be really the city and the Main Street Program working together and say, what's our next priority for the coming year, or the next three years, for that matter?
Well, we've been talking about an old building on Second and Main, and it's a disaster, it's been six years in the council, and we're still working on it. That should be one priority. The other one should be the theater that we've been working on. And those being very vocal, I have been very vocal in the Commission, and I have not seen anything happening on those things.
And how does that get related, other than at the Commission, through the city departments? Planning, or the city administrator?
I don't know, we've been trying to work on those, those are disasters. We put a lot of money in the Main Street area, and then you have that dilapidated building there that, kind of the street is unoccupied, on worst, we can utilize it for what, six, seven years, eight, maybe? And then, you know, and so you got, they have good events downtown, I mean, railroad, and look what happens.
Right.
I mean, you can only utilize half of the street, and that's one priority. We really, really want, are working on economic development, we want to come down to the next quarter of dilapidated buildings.
Right, okay. So I am making notes of that, because when we did the contract discussion, I might be able to insert some language in the contract that works for both the city and the Main Street Program to kind of prioritize that.
Just blocks the whole thing?
Yeah.
You can't even get downtown, I mean, it takes away from the, um, depot down there.
Right.
And the other thing we've been working on since nineteen eighty is, you know, the theater, we want to do something with it, renovate it, do something very constructive, we're working on the grant right now, but these are things that are just stalemate, they're just confused stale.
And that's definitely what we want to hear today.
Yeah, and really, you know, we're really looking forward to having a downtown street, like a lot of the old communities, and we have a lot of potential down there.
Exactly.
And I'm very happy, I'm very of our town, I love my town, you know, and so little things like that, just really, ear-take thing for me that only can't move, because we can work hard, we can do parts, we can do things. Then across the street, you have a big old building that you better not get close to, it'll rock a mile, or it might take you out.
Well, and once it gets codified, those priorities get codified in some of these agreements, Daniel can also apply his technical assistance to support getting those projects moving forward as well, right? And that's exactly the kind of feedback I'm looking for today.
And don't think I'm not invested in the downtown, I own a building down, right here on Main Street. And so I'm not, it's not that I'm talking, I owe somebody invested personally.
Oh, I have not, I'm assuming you all here, all of you are in this room today because you are invested, right?
Yeah, definitely. And so those things, ear-take, because we're trying to really renovate the downtown, bring people down, coffee shops, whatever.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
If you don't mind, Eduardo, on page six of the attachment, where's Tucumcari falling in that picture? And has that changed from the last?
So, no, and actually, Daniel and I have had this conversation recently, right? So the, you're talking about the table that's in there? So Tucumcari is considered a rural community less than five thousand residents, right? So their, the technical agreements would be the twenty thousand dollars just to have the Main Street Program, and that's for operations? And then usually the rest of the funding, so that's the absolute minimum requirement? And you will notice at the bottom of the table, which is on page seven, it says, note, operating at the minimum budget and staffing isn't really adequate to advance the work of the four points, right? And so that's why I write the contract for the core services, here's what you're paying for the core services just to have the Main Street Program, and then the additional services, which is the second half of the contract, is all the additional funding that you provide for that. All right, thank you.
Anyone else, Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments, just on some of the goals, I think, moving forward. I'd really like to see the mixed-use zoning ordinance go through, it's something we've been working on for a little bit, that took a little pause for a little bit, but I'd like to see that moving forward, and then some kind of weight finding, not only for the Main Street area, but also throughout the town, so I think those are two things that Connie and I had discussed, that I definitely want to see those continue to move forward.
What was the first one you said?
The first one?
The mixed-use zoning.
We discussed that.
Or you can have a apartment upstairs and your store downstairs.
Dual use, you could both operate the business, commercial, and reside there.
All right, so let's digress just real quick. You changed the zoning for Main Street already, right? Is it a separate zone, is still our, C1?
C2 and C1. There's no venue overlay. We discussed that during the cannabis ordinance.
Okay, so that's an inventory.
What I don't understand, we've been talking about it for what, four, five years, something? Because I've been, and it's still not even ever introduced, we thought, I believe we brought it up in a fail.
It has been brought up multiple times, and...
But why wasn't it ever drafted in ordinance, where we could repeal the other one?
That's Community Development Department, not Main Street.
Or Main Street should pretty much bring it up to us, so that we can...
It has been brought up multiple times, yeah.
They provided staffing, and Ria Serna has actually given us tons of knowledge and ideas and information on it.
So that's a stall part in the city, you're saying? Not here, okay.
There is a draft out there, though, right? A draft, and that was worked on, what we have?
There is a spreadsheet with all of the documented properties downtown that has what their usage is, what the potential for usage, she has prepared a white sheet that has basically what her findings were when she went through our existing ordinances, and then what her suggestions are based off of other communities.
Is that the next step, you're looking for graph language for the actual ordinance?
Yeah. That's where we're at.
Yeah, that would be the next step. But you say you've got an overlay.
No, we do not have.
Oh, you do not?
That's what we're suggesting, is the mixed-use zoning overlay for downtown.
Even though some people are doing it, we're not enforcing it, so, you know, there's people that are living on top, and having their business in the bottom. So this shouldn't be any problem in process.
So Daniel, is that something that we can connect Ria to around graph language for the city to take a look at?
Yeah, probably draft language, you know, we can't give legal advice, so that's where you would certainly have to, you know, get your city legal attorney to review it and approve, but we can certainly provide draft language.
Along with that, with an ordinance, along with the mixed-use, I'd like to see something kind of like, kind of like the city of Len has done with their vacant building ordinance, that would give us some, give us some muscle when it comes to vacant buildings.
And that is actually Ria Serna as well?
Yeah.
Right, so she, the property we developed.
We really have to be careful there, with the vacant building right now, because if you don't have anything drafting or recruiting downtown, all you're going to do is just create more problems.
Right, right.
And actually, I can understand if we were economically booming or doing something downtown, then we can actually say, well, you know, we've got all this business, but these people aren't doing nothing. If you wind up enforcing a vacant building ordinance, you can have abandoned, or you can have the building knocked down.
Right.
And what do you do? We already got enough parking space without having to have another building gone.
Exactly.
So we have to be sensitive, because what percentile of our buildings are empty downtown?
I do have that number, but I don't have a...
Well, you've had several businesses pop up in the last year.
We've had five new businesses in the last year open downtown.
And actually, it's not a matter that people can fix them, it's a matter of there's some economic benefit for it. You can have nice buildings and everything else, but if you cannot, why would I want to put in a hundred thousand dollars in a roof if I'm not going to be able to get that dollar returned?
Exactly.
You know what I mean?
What is the city's...
That's why we have to be very sensitive in that part.
So, go ahead, Daniel.
Yeah, so I think part of it, and, you know, I know I've talked with Ria about this in the past, we actually presented this at the structure conference a couple weeks ago, when it comes to the vacant building ordinance, you know, so it's not so much, I mean, there's a lot of difficulties with enforcement, and, you know, you don't want to be the bad guy as a city, and ultimately, you want these buildings to come back into use, so, you know, if we really take the approach, well, yes, we do need some type of ordinance, because we want to encourage people to, you know, to not just let their buildings go through neglect, but we also want to create incentives to get them to actually invest in them, give them opportunities, you know, like with the overlay zone, that could create different opportunities that they couldn't use before, right? So the idea is really to try to create more incentives to encourage and entice building owners to invest in their buildings and bring new businesses in.
And that's more like what's underlying that I'm looking at, better than going over and trying to enforce our vacant building ordinance, trying to get some action, but there's no need for it, because what we do, the need to do is do that encouragement into drafting people into downtown. That's how economic development works, and it also works in a very positive manner, and you don't get the landlord, the owner of the land, upset with you, and then now, all of a sudden, some of them will knock these buildings down. They're not poor people, you know, but they'll knock them down rather than they have to. Some of these buildings are very dilapidated, are very, need a lot of money, and you have to weigh the difference between knocking a building down or renovating it, and what are you going to do if you already got enough parking space in downtown?
Yeah, I think it's just really the ordinance is really for the extreme cases, where, you know, the incentives don't work, because sometimes they all just don't, right? So that's kind of really when you want something with some teeth in its mouth, when it becomes necessary.
Yeah, like Alberta does very well with their vacant building ordinance, but they've got demands for those type of buildings, you know? We don't.
Well, we're going, that's part of our work, is to make a demand, get a demand.
Yeah, well, make it, yeah, make it...
I would beg to differ on the demand, I just want to call weekly on people who think they're rentable, but see.
Before I ask Daniel to cover the Great Blocks piece and the next phase of the construction and any other comments, so we'll come back to some of these and put them back in, and talk about how to get them in the contract for this year?
Yeah.
But any other comments on the MOU?
I haven't read it, so I wouldn't have any comment.
Daniel, would you feel comfortable just kind of walking through the next phase of the Great Blocks construction and the capital funding?
Sure, so, I, you know, and I think this is a point I just wanted to check in, I know when we did the first phase, you know, we ran into just, you know, some of the work, you know, I know you guys had some difficulty with the contractor and some of the follow-through, so I think, you know, when I was out there, I still think it looks great, and I think we still have a great opportunity to finish that project up. I remember I was out there talking with Mark, about what would it would take to get that project done, because I know, I believe there was about a hundred and sixty or so thousand left from the previous construction, because things still hadn't get done. I encouraged Tucumcari to apply for four hundred thousand more, because I think that's what we determined it would cost, after talking with Mark and Connie, to get that project completed, so just as we move forward, we finally did, and it did take a while to get just approvals from the bottom board this year, it took an excessive amount of time. We submitted those things out in, I think, December, and we finally got approval about a month and a half ago, and I, it's just, an unfortunate instance, they were going through some difficulties over there through change in their legal counsel, so it did take a little while, but that is complete. I know Julie sent the grant agreement to you guys, so I just wanted to follow up, just to make sure that we had good communication as we went forward with this second four hundred thousand, and to complete the project, just so we knew, you know, who was the point person, you know, that we should be connecting with on the city side, and just that we're all communicating, the Main Street, the local, Tucumcari Main Street, and the city, that we're all on the same page as far as moving that project forward and staying in communication, so that, you know, I think as it gets completed, you know, we can really tailor our efforts towards the follow-up to the Great Blocks, to that investment in terms of technical assistance, and trying to continue recruiting more businesses, follow it up on the, you know, building we have, and those types of things, but...
So what are you talking about?
Just wanted to check again and see, you know, who it was that I should be in connection with, who's, what department, at least the grant oversight and project oversight was going to be under.
And you're talking about these four hundred thousand? I'm still a little...
Yes, so it's the second allocation that we approved, that we allocated, I think, in November, for the second phase to complete some of that work, I believe it was the lighting and some amenities, if I remember correctly, maybe Mark or Connie can fill that in.
Lighting, landscaping, and some concrete repair.
Well, it's pretty much to finish the second block.
Finish the second block, the irrigation.
Good. Hopefully we can do it.
So then come through the, through the city manager's office, Mark, the community development? And you, what, I think Daniel was trying to figure out what's the best, the conduit for the communication and coordination of that between the city and the state?
Yeah, Connie and I had talked about it, so the next step, we'll approve that through City Commission, and then we're often going to be projects managed by community development. And the one thing we discussed that I'd like to see is probably some onsite inspection, whereas last time, we didn't have as much onsite inspection, that probably led to some of the issues we had. There were some difficulties with the contractor, but we want to make sure we don't run into those same issues again this time around. So we want to make sure we have some onsite inspection, but community development will take the lead when it comes to day-to-day project management, approvals will come through City Commission, and I think that would be the best communication line through community development.
And your suggestion onsite is the engineering company?
It's through the engineering company typically, and there's also maybe some opportunities to have a New Mexico Main Street staff help out as well.
Yeah, it was a disaster, because we didn't have adequate onsite.
Not what?
And it was a mess, and it created a real, poor relation with the people downtown who have business, and that was a, it was a nightmare. And nobody wanted to take responsibility or explain why it was a disaster.
And Daniel, the next step on that one is to get that contract approved through the City Commission?
Actually, I'm not sure where it's at now, I know Julie sent it, the grant agreement, I'm not sure exactly where it is, I haven't checked in, she updated me if she's gotten it back, but I believe, I heard from Connie that it's still in Tucumcari.
Yes, so hopefully the, it's too late for the upcoming meeting, but the June ninth meeting.
And that money's available, so as soon as we get that grant agreement back, you know, as you guys move forward to selecting a contractor, we just got to make sure that we get a copy of the contract before work begins, and, you know, I know you guys have done this before, just so we can get out of the notice of obligation, that we need to get on our side, that guarantees repayment of the money that you spent, or invoices you submit.
Got it.
So, the money, you spend the money, and they reimburse?
Yes.
Mark, you already have the contractor, right, pretty much?
I don't believe so, I'd have to talk to Ralph and Vicky, but...
Just on the electrics, so Bixby is lined up to do the electric.
Right.
Correct, but as far as landscaping and concrete and everything else, we'd have to go out and go through our formal processes, we might care, man, RPs, whatever, but more than likely, just be a bid.
Okay, so...
Any other questions around the Great Blocks or funding?
Any other questions for the State Director before he steps out of the meeting?
No questions, I just want to thank you, Daniel, for always taking care of us here in Tucumcari and working with us, it's a great partnership, and I continue... It's a great partnership and I continue, I look forward to continuing that relationship. So thanks for everything. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it too. I mean, I've always appreciated the way the local ministry program and you guys have worked with us. So, you know, we're committed there and I think that shows by our continued investment in the community in many different ways. And we really appreciate all the work you do. I do have some good news or potentially good news to share as well. When I was in, before I stepped up, when I was in Richmond, I had a meeting with other state coordinating programs around Route sixty-six Centennial that's going to be coming up in a couple of years. And they're really trying to plan around how to celebrate it across multiple states, so, you know, all the way through. So it was directors from five or six different states that have at least a portion of it. And during that meeting, we met with a couple of film producers that are looking to do a documentary on Route sixty-six and kind of like the unexpected things, you know, that, so not like, you know, how it was built, but kind of the history and like some of the unexpected stories that have come out of there or taken place there. But they're looking to do two to three like highlights in each state. So we will be submitting, you know, information from Tuukka Mary. And I know we'll be working with Connie and hopefully city folks to, you know, identify stories that we can share. Ultimately, they're going to pick which two to three in each state is the film directors. But there's good opportunity, I think, for all of us to highlight some of the work and the connections to Route sixty-six and Tuukka Mary as well. So I'll be following up with you guys as we hear more. I mean, it's still about three years out as far as actual, they're in the pre-production phase now, just kind of looking and kind of gathering the information. But it is a little longer term process, but I think it could be really a good opportunity to share some of the history as the Centennial starts getting celebrated for that, you know, one hundred year anniversary of the road. So I'll be in touch more as I know more. But just wanted to let you guys know that that's potentially coming down the pike and looking forward to the opportunity.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it. If you want to hang around for the contract discussion, you can. I'll leave that up to you.
I leave that to my contract guy. If you guys have any questions, please do let me know, but I appreciate your support. And, you know, again, we look forward to working with you guys long into the future. So thank you a lot for all you do.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll pass around. I have two more handouts that I'll send around. And I think I'm short one, so maybe you can, you have mine. Just a quick head, I think we can, we can probably get this meeting. So the usually, so the contracts is usually an area where New Mexico Main Street, the local Main Street program will ask us to come in and provide some feedback. And so the document with the stakeholder in it is the current contract with Tuukka Mary Main Street for this current fiscal year, which ends at the end of June. And so you'll notice that basically, and I talked about this earlier, the scope of services, that core services, which is at the bottom of page one and goes almost to the bottom of page two, that's basically all the things that you would pay Tuukka Mary Main Street for, that minimum amount of work, right? Starting at the bottom of page two and going into page three and four is basically the additional services, right? So that you're basically a scope of services contract based on deliverables. You provide, approve the funding first through the MOU and then second through this contract. So usually I'll come in and help work with the Main Street program and the city kind of update their contracts for the coming year. Couple of things that I did want to cover. And so usually, as I mentioned before, the economic transformation strategies, which is at the bottom of page two and in the middle of page three, those strategies won't change, but the projects are going to be adjusted from one year to the next, right? And then once either economic conditions change or you've reached that transformation strategy and achieved it, then we would ask the organization to kind of revise and update that. Other things that have an opportunity to change that is if you adopt a comprehensive plan or an updated downtown master plan, we would go back and update those transformation strategies. What I'm hoping to do, which is just have a conversation with you around the second, this handout that I gave you, so one pager, right? As I start to work on the updated contract for this coming year, first, the first thing I do is I usually go back to the board and I say, okay, what are your updated work plans and your project priorities this year that we need to kind of build into the current contract? And so I'm working with the board already. Probably within a month or so, we'll have all that information all sorted out as well. If there are any pieces that you want to see in the contract around the Great Blocks, the coordination, construction mitigation, the quality management, the project oversight, right? Anything related to dispute resolution, if that needs to be in there. What would their role be with the dispute resolution? What would the city role be? Then let me know. And I'm hoping that, and you don't have to give me all the answers today because I can connect with Mark after today as well and find out if there's anything additional we could have, right? The third one, is there any coordination that's needed on other projects other than Great Blocks, right? And so that might be some of your events, event security, road closures, those kind of things, any other projects? And I think going back to what Commissioner Moyn said earlier, we have some other priorities we need to work on, things like the ordinances. I would start to write some of those into this contract as well. The fourth one, and so this one is relatively new because I told, I'm the one that helped the railroad museum basically dissolve their corporation and transfer not only their assets, but their business functions to Tuukka Mary, Tuukka Mary Main Street. I do want to get some feedback from the commission and from Mark as well around anything related to that. I think, so we have probably about seven Main Street programs that operate in programs inside city facilities. So in Silver City and then the visitor center, in Clayton, the Luna Theater, and House and Reno, so they're actually working on this here, sort of public bathrooms, public restrooms, and how that plays out, the city's property versus what support Main Street can provide for those as well. I think it's important to include some language in this contract around the railroad depot, the museum and sort of the facilities management. There's a lot of things that could come into place, capital improvements, maintenance, utilities, general maintenance, insurance liability issues as well, right? Most of the other communities have different degrees of how they, the city is protecting themselves in these, in the uses of these facilities and how the Main Street program has protected themselves as well, right? And so I just, and then the last thing, the fifth one, is is there anything else that you feel like we need to kind of think about addressing in the contract? This is where I'd like to open up and I'll take some notes, the city commission, to Mark, to the Main Street board. Is there anything, as I start to prepare this updated contract? And I heard Commissioner Moyn has comments earlier and Mark, your comments about the priorities around ordinances. I'll start to start putting language in this current contract around those pieces as well. But I just want to open up and see if there's anything else that the commission or the board wants to make sure we get addressed in the current contract.
I would say one of the big things we need to focus on is the maintenance of the building. I know a lot of money was invested in there. And I had the privilege of going to it the other day. And two of your doors are now unable to be used. The window on the far east or west side is starting to rot away and missing pieces. So we need to figure out how we're going to maintain that building.
And they fixed the leaks and everything in the bathroom, the men's bathroom?
Yeah.
Okay, that is then, okay. And then at one time it was a major problem.
Actually, what I hear a lot of people that move into the community is the fact is that we really don't have something to really attract the events that downtown. I mean, I had a lady, what is it, about a week or so ago, she bought a home here. I think she bought some guy named Peabody's house or something like that. And she goes like, the downtown could be something very good to be able to utilize and go like that. That's why the theater, the Princess Theater is a lesson to bring in some sort of a culture. We used to have theater downtown. It was an event. It was great. We used to have our own production crew, those that would do, put on plays and stuff like that. And so, you know, in order, if you're going to have coffee shops, you're going to have maybe whatever they call those things, breweries or anything, you also don't have to have some sort of activity, not only, not that you don't need to go to movies and do everything on Netflix, but they like something that's more culturally for the, with the events of the downtown area, you know? Because the downtown shouldn't close at five o'clock, you know, and should also have other interests after five. And the local people, we have a lot of new commerce into our community and they're very progressive. Some of them had talked to me and said, you know, we'd like to see something more creative so that we can participate, be part of it.
So going back to Daniel's comments about the potential incentives, I don't know if the Princess Theater is publicly owned or privately owned.
The city owns it.
The city owns that building? So I think there's an opportunity to have another conversation with Daniel around their infrastructure, potential infrastructure money to make some improvements there and get that reactivated. Secretary Bala years ago started, launched the, through Main Street, the Historic Theaters Project. And there were eight or nine theaters that received resources for the conversion to digital projection. The Odeon Theater was also beneficiary of those resources, although it wasn't infrastructure money, it was lead-up funds, right? Local economic development. But I think if the city's ready to prioritize the Princess Theater, then I think that's definitely a conversation we want to ask Daniel. And he'll probably want to wait until he finishes the Great Blocks piece to try and put in improvement money, capital improvement money to the theater. But I think if it's a priority for the city, the Main Street program, now is a good opportunity to start with the planning and the engineering work around that one.
Because anytime you improve a building downtown, it makes it more attractive and more businesslike.
Absolutely.
If you go back, the Princess Theater was one of the priorities in the master plan.
Yeah.
The Princess Theater was the recipient of architectural student studies. Elmo Baca and I, it has been studied and studied and studied. And the bottom line is if you, unless you've got four or five million dollars, you're not, you're not going to make a difference.
No. Actually, last year they said, what was it, two years ago, they said that, you know, to get it off the park and everything was one point one million dollars.
Has there been a structural engineer to look at, looked at it?
Yeah, they've done all that.
So that's in writing somewhere that it's one point?
Sure, somewhere. We just put another roof in there not too long ago.
That's already leaking.
It is leaking, again, yeah, but I mean, it was going to because they did new roof.
And Mark, I think from the public funding side of the equation, four or five million dollars was just, nobody was ready to have that conversation years ago. This year, Main Street got ten million dollars and they're moving it. So the way, actually, maybe it's probably good for me to share with the commission right now how it's working out. Like, New Mexico Main Street was lucky to get a quarter of a million, a half a million a year and try and move that around into thirty different communities and it just wasn't having much of an impact. And wasn't getting a whole lot of traction with the legislature to get funded. The last three years, Main Street got four million, two and a half million, this year ten million. And what Daniel is doing now is he's notifying the legislature, here's our pipeline, which is why the plans are in four, here's our pipeline, and he's going to fund it until it gets completed, right? And the legislature is appreciating that they're seeing, okay, we might have to wait in COVID or we might have to wait in Hardy County a little bit longer, but there's a pipeline there ready to go. They're appreciating that he's moving the funding through two or three-year increments to finish the project, which is why he's trying to get the Great Blocks done. He's got, they're going to go back this year, the next legislative session, and ask for another ten million dollars. It's on the governor's call. It's on the department secretary's request as well. We're seeing a little bit different resources for these projects than we had years ago, right? So I don't think it's unheard of. You're not going to get it all at once, but I don't think it would, it's unreasonable to say that there's a potential to get that project funded over a three or a four-year period. If you have the engineering architectural work done, that's going to be the first step he's going to need. He's going to need those stamped, stamped engineering documents ready to go so they can start moving through the process. Because he's going to prioritize Great Blocks first and getting that funded and finished, I think if the Princess Theater is a priority and hopefully before it starts to really fall in, that's the next conversation you need to have with him. Because I think what he's doing now is he's really doing a lot of research in each community. Say, what are your priorities? Which ones need to be up first? And he's going back to the legislature trying to sell as well. Those that are moving right up to the front of the list is where we have all the architecture and the engineering work done. And if you need the resources for that, then that's what you want to ask him for very soon. So basically what you're saying is you want to have like some old show already? That's exactly what.
I don't know where we're at, but I know we've done a lot of studies and a lot of engineering. It's like every time we turn around, we do another study and another engineering and nothing happens.
Everybody here at this table understands and heard, everything's doubled. So if this study was done five, six, seven years ago.
It's going to be updated.
It's going to, it's going to need to be updated. And you're looking, if it was one point five million, then it's three million now or better.
And we still have, we still have the Main Street part of the Great Blocks project. So that would come in front of.
It would, but you may be able to get rolling on the updated architectural and engineering documents, right? Or at least the co-formalists are on that as well.
And what are we going to be able to do? What are my recommendations? Give us the half of the street that we're able to use in that piece?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
On the main and second, the building that already fell into half the street that we had blocked off, that's a big priority because we really, that really is limiting in our ability to regress and regress on that area and to dump, right?
I think that falls more on the city and water honesty. That's a co-construction issue.
I still want to bring it up because we are putting all this effort and energy and still, and that's still saying like a, like Ukraine bombed it or something, you know?
Also, do, haven't we planned on that little, where it used to be the sand storage, it's now the grassy park area? Haven't we planned on putting some benches and maybe having some activities on that occasionally?
Yes, and we have talked about the potential for putting some relit neon into that. And we've been acquiring some of the neon.
Okay.
That is in our work plan. We have actually gotten some grant money from a foundation as well to update some of that neon. So that's, it's moving here, but.
Yeah, okay, all right. Because I knew that was one of the things that we wanted to.
That is not part of the current Great Blocks funding, the upcoming?
No. Quick question then, the four hundred thousand dollar grant this year is for last year's, this current year?
Yes.
It's not out of the ten million?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's not out, no, they haven't spent it yet.
That's fine.
Mayor Letzfield, do you have another one you want to?
No, that was.
So going back to the depot facility, Commissioner, you mentioned about the maintenance and the improvements there. You feel like that process needs to be spelled out in the contract? Or, so usually in the other communities, most of that is in on the city side? I don't know where the board stands, what, you know, what needs to happen, I guess, with the improvements and the maintenance at the railroad depot? Does any of that need to kind of language appear in this contract?
Mr. Manager, what, I don't mind it being in the contract.
I think it should be in the contracts. I think we've dropped balls to the city now and again where we need to do a better job of keeping our facilities left apart. Same thing as the grounds too, whether it's sprinklers up front, whether it's lights on the street, the building itself.
Well, we have to be careful also because right now we don't have enough staff in the city. We can't be pulling the parking, parking people to go over there and fix a light bulb or fix a plug. But we don't have enough of the rest of the city and we have responsibility outside of the city.
Understood, yeah. I hear you. Understood, yeah, I, I, I hear you. So we have to be careful there how we put it in the annual.
I hope I was willing to do it, but.
Right.
But you understand.
But it is something that should be lined out in the contract, who's responsible for what.
I agree.
And, and if not, at, who's responsible for what? At the very least, what is the process for, for, for prioritizing and addressing these issues together, right?
We have to be careful because that's personnel. And we don't want anybody from any other agency or anything or trying to enforce our personnel to do things. So actually.
But I think it's about the part of management.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
Part of management.
I did get complaints of them being called to do this and do that. And I said, well, we're gonna take it to the city manager. And that's why I said we have to be careful.
Can I interrupt the complaint about me calling in?
Yeah, it was about you.
Well, I call, I go through the chain of command, turning in a work order and then calling the department head, which is what I was supposed to do.
And then one of the employees by referring to actually has to be called directly instead of contacted.
Very correct.
We have to be careful they don't get called directly.
Well, if they asked me.
Called directly.
That is the chain of command I was given. So if that is different, then I would like that to be reflected in the contract as to what the proper chain of command is.
So it's like your light bulbs, for example? I know it took you quite a bit of time to get that light bulb changed, right?
Eight months.
Then that, that process can get anchored out a little.
Yeah, that could be up to city manager, he doesn't have to.
So the chain of command is through the city manager, is that correct?
It's through the work order system. You call the work order, right?
So, okay, so is that I call Mark or I call the city hall? Because work order goes through the city hall, right?
So, well, when that individual department head is saying, why is she calling you? She needs to call me directly, then that's what we change it to. That's what the department had requested.
Yeah. But he's complaining about it, he shouldn't be complaining about it.
If she feels other, a work order, then where does that work order go to?
So we have a work order system called IWork. So if Connie was to call, front desk, one of the girls would answer, they input it to the system and then it automatically kicks it to that department.
It is possible.
And then the department head is supposed to go through service possibility to keep an eye on those work orders. And if they're not, if I hear there's a delay, I'll go look at the worker system myself, give an email or a call and say, hey, look, this has been waiting for some time, so you do something about it. And that's typically how it works.
So they do their own priorities and so you're the Q and A on it?
Yep.
But you usually get a complaint before you do a.
Yes.
Q and A on it? So, so just to stir it up a little bit more. Again, can a department or Main Street, if they're not acted on in a certain length of time, then it's appropriate to go to you?
Yeah.
And find out.
And we have further live issue, we talked about that numerous times.
So what that would look like in the contract, Commissioner, is basically I would, I would, I would put on the responsibility city around the maintenance and the, the upkeep process. And I would also put a clause that says that the city and Main Street program collaboratively not only establish, but, but implement the process for how that needs to work, right? And so that, because I think what happens is when it does, for whatever reason, right? Shortage of personnel or other reasons, when it does stop, is kind of when the relationship has an opportunity to get, to get a little, a little bit tense, right? Or a little bit of friction between the partners. And I think if you have a good process around that one not only established and even sort of a, a plan B, when things can't get addressed right away, things that don't get to that point, right? Where, where, where.
Yeah, because we have all the museums.
Yeah, exactly. Is there anything other related to the use of the building? Obviously, we have a museum in the back, the Main Street office there, and or the outside of the property that you feel like is important to address in the contract?
Preventive maintenance, that's something we should be doing. We talked about that a couple of years ago on, when the restroom was leaking, the coffee, the windows, the doors, et cetera. And that's something that has to be done.
And the hard part is getting a priority on that, whenever, every other building is deteriorating, the same change rate, yeah.
So in the contract, Mark, it might be sort of a, an annual assessment of what, what's either being deferred, deferred or needs to be in the prevent and maintenance list? And sort of go through a prioritization process with this issue?
I agree, I think it's, I think it's high enough priority. There is also in that work order system, low, moderate, high priority, that's something that I could go and amend. That's something we could probably change internally to, to do that. Because I know there's been other things that have happened on other buildings that weren't a size priority is that, uh, the money that's been dumped into that location. Yeah, we, we definitely can do a better job of that.
Can you set a timeframe to receive a notification if the work order has stayed in there? So if it's been over 30 days, can it be forwarded over?
I don't think it could be forwarded over, but I think that's a search criteria. You could actually go what's been pending or what's over so many days or, it's either searched by date or priority.
How does the city manager know, uh, that the work order has been accomplished?
If they did it correctly, the department head's able to go and then close out the work order, no type's been closed. Other than that, there's no email notification, it's, you'd have to go in there and look and, and see if it's finished, completed or not.
In database.
So as a city manager, city manager is pretty busy. Always busy, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, is that responsibility could maybe go to somebody else that's there or, or maybe an alert button, you know? Because the, the way I see it is, okay, it's low, low priority. Send a work order in, low priority. Two weeks later, you send another work order in, same thing, now it raises up to medium level priority. Then the third time it goes, has a high priority. I think we'll have to expiate.
Can the program flag after a certain period of time?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Something.
Not that I'm aware of, okay. What I would suggest, David, and I can actually write this in the agreement, is that at least quarterly, that Tukum Carri, Main Street and the city convene and kind of process that. And it might, it might just be an agenda item on the city commission. It might just be a, a, a meeting between the department heads, community development, the city manager, Tukum Carri, Main Street. But I think at, at the very minimum that you have, that you, that you, it's prioritized to have that conversation. Hey, we, in the last quarter, we submitted six requests and we're still waiting on these and, and here's kind of the potential challenges. City, I agree with you, city managers are usually extremely busy and hard pressed to make those sessions. But if you, if you kind of set some time at least quarterly for, for, for the groups to get together and kind of communicate, coordinate and, and talk about next steps or priorities, then, then it helps things go a lot easier.
Do you get any kind of record when you do a work order?
When I turn the work order in? I don't, I don't know if the person that I give it to is actually inputting it, I don't know.
Or even looked at it?
Or has even looked, yeah. I don't get any communication from the department head that says.
So it's simple enough, if you're any department head, I'm doing logs.
Which is why I follow up with the department head after I turn the work order in. Hey, I turned this in, it's on its way. Because I have no way of knowing something that's been turned to him hasn't been.
Who prioritizes work order?
I think we, we should just let the city manager.
If it's a health safety, that should be the highest priority. Anything else would be a medium level.
All that, that's all issue, like I said, whoever inputs it up front, whoever's receiving it.
So is any city employee able to ensure the work order?
Not any city employee, but department heads and.
Right now I just log it in my calendar.
So it's impossible to allow our outlined facilities to be able to implement?
They do, the, the.
So, so the, uh, the Main Street office, the historical museum and the 66th museum, could they input their own work order?
Uh, historical museum, uh, is the only entity that does because they're a city department. So, uh, Polat actually has access to it, but. It's something we could talk about, I don't know if it requires a license or not, but, um, you'd have to get, we'd have to get Connie a username and password issued.
And if you have a different process, you may not need to go down that path, right? On a licensing. But I think if you have even just a quarterly review, right? Or you, you know, here's the work order submitted, here's the ones completed, here's the ones in process, those kind of things. And I, I'll be happy to take care of that.
And, and you know, if it's electrical, everybody's having problems with electrical stuff too now. It's like, it's like baby milk, you know? We need to know something that, hey, we're having problems getting this, it's like it's three months backward, yeah.
It's gonna be a while.
That would be nice to say, hey, that way we know, or Connie knows.
Yeah, that's something that's completely out of your hands if you don't know what you have. It's gonna get worse.
I know you'd have to, I actually just had a couple more, a couple more topics I wanted to cover, right? The communications and, and reporting piece. So the, the, is there any, to, I will say this, and I'll try and be sensitive about how they say it, right? Tukum Carri, Main Street is in a different place to be, right? And I think the state has very high confidence in Connie and what has happened, right? In the last couple of years. I want to make sure that the city feels like they're, they're getting from her and this board the communication you need. You're, you have to protect your investment and the taxpayer's resources. I want to make sure that you're getting the communication you need. Is there anything that you feel could be better to be changed up in that part of the process?
I'm just, I'm impressed with all the work that Connie's done and, and then she's brought us up to date. And she keeps us, she comes to before the commission and keeps us pretty well updated on what's going on.
And how often do you do that?
A formal, I try to do quarterly. Because if there's other things going on, I come before.
So when you do your quarterly report to Main Street?
Just include that work order part in there.
Then you come and do your presentation there about the same time?
Yeah.
Do we get that, do we get a copy of that report that you give them?
No.
Or is that sensitive or something?
Um, usually I just do the annual report with all of the totals, um, but if you want the quarterly.
No, I don't know if that's necessary.
Are you talking about the reinvestment statistics that go to state?
Yeah.
No, I don't. I just saw that in here and I was just wondering if that.
I don't typically report that.
But that's something that tells you to get on the agenda to do it.
Actually, maybe a little more communication because I didn't even know we even had fight business when we were located downtown. I, I mean, I'm just right a couple, one and a half block away from downtown practically. I mean, we got cut off one year.
Right.
And, and I didn't even know there was anybody investing downtown usually, but I find out, I find out.
It's been all over.
Well, but I, I really didn't. And I, and I, you know, unless like Patel and them come in and visit with me, I wouldn't have known they even had a century and stuff like that. I didn't even know who the new business owner down there.
So, so I, there's, there's elements that are actually simple, easy to do that we can, that we can bring into this, into the process as well. And I'll be happy to help with that when we're, when we're here as well for our, our, our annual reviews and that process.
And so with that, I mean, is there something the board needs from us as well?
Uh, I don't know about Connie, but I mean, the words form, form Mark, but, uh, you know, I'm not speaking, I hope I'm not speaking out of line. You know, we have our, our meetings once a month, you're more than welcome to show up to our meetings.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to know what.
You've been there, Mark has been there.
Either way.
Yeah, it's a public meeting. And we can go.
You don't listen to.
Second Tuesdays, what is it?
Second Tuesday.
Do we not have an appointed liaison?
We do not. No, we don't.
Mark is on as an executive CEO, but.
And I can, I can do that because the seniors aren't meeting right now, so. As far as I know, I can be the liaison to that.
We, that would help with communication, what we've talked about. You can bring it to the rest.
So just put me on your list and let me know.
Is that something that needs to be formally appointed out of commission meeting?
No, I just.
Just point yourself.
I just appointed myself.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's all right, because I think we did need a liaison to Main Street.
Okay, so I have one last one. And I'm gonna circle back around to the first part of our conversation when Daniel was here around business incentives and it gets, getting business downtown. I think part of what the economic development department in New Mexico Main Street wants to see is that the infrastructure improvements leverage the private investment, right? So that, so that businesses are starting to move into downtown. I think it, it may not be able to move in the current fiscal year, but I want to throw this out as an idea to the commission. I think there's an opportunity for New Mexico Main Street and potentially other partners to help in planning for that. What are the, what is the full picture around incentives? We need to create this incentives, as you know, when we talked about sort of the vacant properties ordinances. What is that full package that the city is ready to move on that leverages the public infrastructure money to, to incentivize the private investment? And I, and I think at least in the coming year and maybe either late this year or early in 2023, in the same fiscal year, it's maybe a little bit longer work session and planning session with the city and the state and Tukum Carri, Main Street to talk about. Here's all the options, tax increment, financing, uh, development districts, uh, overlays that Daniel was talking about, all those options that create, uh, the MRA tools, right? You have an MRA designation, all those tools that you can leverage to start incentivizing business to move into downtown as well.
So we need to correct steps on that because they talked about that. I was with the county when they were talking about the, the tax, the PIB.
Right, the PIBs?
Yeah. And it just kind of went away because I assumed that we, that the city had changed the zoning.
Right.
So we need to define those steps. And can you help us with that?
Absolutely.
That we need to go, you know, whether we need to do the zoning first, the overlay first, whatever.
I think New Mexico Main Street has the technical assistance to help with that. What we can't do is, is get a good partnership between you and the county, right? And that's where we'd have to rely on you to say, the city and the county want to move together on these.
Maybe they will.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of conversations with the managers now, I think.
So has there been?
It's all with the golf course.
Has there been progress on the metropolitan redevelopment area project?
Here in, in?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, Charlie Gaines came out, we created the, the map and did all that. And he met with the city commission and that's, that's what happened.
So the tax, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, my, my.
The, the, the tax, that's an ad loriom tax, that's where you have to work with the county.
Yes.
Yeah.
But tax increment financing is just the increment, so it's not a new tax. And, and I want to make sure that I'm clear about that because, because probably not the time to be adding new taxes to anybody. Right? It's when you, when you start doing improvements and the property values go up, the increment over the baseline of what it was in 2022 is saved. And once you accumulate those funds, you can start reinvesting that.
The county and the city would have to agree because the city gets part of that.
Yes.
Increment.
Yeah.
And by with the tax lightning laws and all, it's limited to three or 4% a year.
I think it's closer to four.
Okay, it might be four.
Yeah.
Uh, accessory hits a button and that raises your tax.
That's right.
So it's.
I wish it was that easy.
So it's probably approximately two cents or less that goes to the, or percent that the city receives. But that'd go into this, uh.
Yes, but the county can also have a, a fund as well, the, a TIP fund.
Right.
Because they're collecting that. It means that the city and the county are partnering and saying, when we have enough corpus in this fund, let's move that money to this project.
And that can go to an incentive fund.
That's correct.
Okay, so it, it washes the tax into a 501(c) that can be spent to private.
So it doesn't go to the 501(c), it's reinvested in, in, in the downtown district, right? So it's not creating additional corpus of funds that incentivize.
So how do you incentivize using that to private?
That's usually infrastructure, TIP. Private, you have to adopt a LEEDA fund, a LEEDA ordinance, right? Local economic development act. Set aside money for that and then allow the city to create what's called the public private partnerships and still be good with anti-donation costs, right?
So you just gave me a huge headache, okay, go ahead.
A good example is, is loving to. The city owned a vacant property with a former gas station. They pulled out the tanks, they tried to sell it three times. Once they adopted the MRA plan and the LEED ordinance, they were now able to accrue funds that allowed them to put out an RFP for somebody to buy that property. And in that case, $100 for a cornered property in, in downtown Lovington with the goal of redevelopment. The developer came in, New Mexico Main Street provided technical assistance for the, the, it was for a pizza place and a brew pub. The state provided 200 grand of their LEED funds. The city provided 80 grand of their LEED funds. The developer came in and was actually at the time a Main Street board member. He stepped off the board, he's a chiropractor and put his, bought the property for $100. Leveraged 280,000 from the city and the state and put another 400,000 of his own money to get a, a, a brew pub and a, and a pizza, pizza place on the corner.
So they didn't have to follow the state rules on selling property? Because you have to have valuation and can't, you know?
Yes, so if you have the MRA that allows you to enter into these and you have MRA to enter into these public-private partnerships via some kind of an RFP. If you have the LEED ordinance and you're using TIP funding, and the TIP funding might go toward the sidewalks, you know, in front of that, that establishment and a lot.
Or any infrastructure.
The LEED funding can actually go directly to the business.
Right, and that's separate then if they, we already have a LEED ordinance?
If, do you have a LEED?
Yeah.
Do you have, so you're not, but you're, are you collecting funds for that right now?
Yes. Quarter percent of what is.
So then you have, then you have the resources, you can start using the, that's the big incentive is LEED right now. That can go directly to a private business for development in, in your district. And I think the details of how that works is where you want to bring either Amy Bell, the urban planner, and her team and Reas Erna to kind of help with that. But all you have to do is say, we're ready and the state will send their people to help you with that problem.
Thank you. You, you, I'm sorry. You cleared up a lot, but then it muddies up a whole lot too.
That's just Mike.
No, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry.
I didn't understand. I know they talked about the tax increment. But that's, that's why they call it the increment. It's just what goes up from the accessory.
Yes. And I think the city's done their first steps. They adopted the MRA, they have a LEED ordinance and they're collecting the money. So the next step is let's get, put that money to you. And we're happy.
Sorry, I didn't do it.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
So I would like to build into the contract, at least for this year, some kind of a work session to really look, okay. If we're really gonna incentivize business development in the downtown district, we need to start working towards that.
I'd prefer that because you know you got an idiot here that you have to teach.
I don't think so. I think you probably know more than you're letting on, you know.
No, I know.
Together we're two halves.
I will say this, that is not my area of expertise, but that's why New Mexico Main Street has those experts on, on the staff as well.
Fantastic. No, I'd like to see, I think that's a, a benefit we need to look at.
What I will try and do as the next step is prepare a draft contract, an update to this one. And try, now I'm, I'm getting ready to go out of town for my son's graduation, but I will try and get that to you as, as quickly as possible so that you can review it and make amendments and try and go into the start of the fiscal year with an executed contract. Any questions for me before we adjourn?
Thank you for coming and working with us.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you, Daniel. Thank you.
I know I'm, I'm intruding on your time, so I appreciate the time that you're allocating.
Hey, you got me on the worker, I mean, I appreciate it.
Thank you all for being a great partner with Main Street. We love what you're doing here. We're ready to support you in the next.